We're going to call the meeting order. Roll call.
Mr. Hemingway.
Here.
Mr. Uptergrove.
Here.
Mr. Brophy.
Here.
Ms. Nyman.
Here.
Ms. Duroff.
Present.
Mrs. Scott.
Here.
Ms. Hogan.
Present.
Mr. Zawada.
Here.
Mr. Penarello.
Here.
All present.
Let's rise for the pleasure of leading some of them's songs.
The allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Board of School Directors met in an executive session before this evening's meeting, Tuesday, August 22nd. The topic was a collective bargaining agreement. The meeting lasted one hour.
All right. Tonight, we are going to be honoring one of our August class of 2023 graduates, William Wood. William, will you please stand? So on behalf of the Boyertown Area School District, we would like to recognize William Wood as a summer of 2023 graduate. William completed courses virtually over the summer to earn his diploma, which he has with him. He is planning on enlisting in the Marines as part of his post-secondary plans. The administration would like to thank William for his determination in completing his graduation requirements and wishes him the best of luck moving forward. Congratulations, William. We are very, we are extremely proud of you, and we know how hard high school work can be, and then let alone to do work virtually and to work over the summer. Those are even larger challenges that present themselves, but you had the grit, the determination to accomplish that and to be able to be moving into the armed forces. We are very proud of you and we're honored and appreciate, you know, the fact that you want to serve, you know, to our country. Do you have anything that you'd like to share with the group or any small words? Anything, any, any words of wisdom for future graduates?
Thank you for being here and just do your work and get through it.
All right. Very good. Thank you again, William. Congratulations. And William, you are welcome to leave if you would like to, or you can stay for the whole meeting. It's up to you, but we just wanted to congratulate you publicly and honor you for the work that you've done. So is anybody, if you'd like to come up and shake anyone's hands, we're happy to provide that opportunity because every other graduate gets to at least walk across the stage and shake hands. And they can start with Mr. South, Dr. Fredrickson. This is Mr. Uptergrove. Congratulations, William. Mr. Penarello. This is Dan Cola, Mr. Saltanic, Ms. Nyman. Mr. Hemingway.
Congratulations. Make us proud.
Yeah. Nice job. Thank you again, William. Congratulations.
Public comment period number one, Jeremy Spacek.
No, it's only three people. Unless it's like 20 minutes.
My name is Jeremy Spacek. I am the president of Boyertown Soccer Club, as well as the father of two boys that attend both Boyertown Middle School East and Boyertown High School. Thank you for the opportunity to the school board, for opening up this part of the meeting to public feedback and comments. As the president of Boyertown Soccer Club, I would like to speak to the benefits to a turf athletic field at Boyertown High School. Boyertown Soccer Club has approximately 600 kids between the ages of five and 17 that will participate in our soccer program this coming fall. One of the necessary elements for community soccer clubs is practicing and playing on turf fields. Many of the older age travel soccer teams play many away games on turf fields. To help prepare our teams and provide the most opportunities for practicing, the soccer club has been running turf fields at local schools and private entities, such as Upper Perk High School, the Hill School 422 Sportsplex, and the Far Posts. Please understand that club teams do their practices and games during evenings and weekends when school teams are not using the fields. Over the past three years, Boyertown Soccer Club has spent approximately $35,000 in rental turf fees. Our club would much rather see those funds go to our own school district rather than other neighboring districts. Obviously, funding a project of this nature will be critical to the board's decision to move forward. There are many grant opportunities from the state of Pennsylvania and private organizations that can help greatly offset a portion of this project. The Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources provides $500,000 or more for projects of this nature. In 2022, Mifflin County School District received $3 million in grants from the PA Department for Community and Economic Development. In 2020, Northern York County School District received a $1.4 million grant from the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Project. I feel that acquiring grant funding will significantly speed up the ability for this school board to approve the installation of turf athletic fields. Thank you for your time, and hopefully, hopefully, we all make the decision that is in the best interest of our students and our community.
McKenna Smith.
My name is McKenna Smith, and I'm a junior at BASH. Up until about a week ago, I was a member, I was a member of the Boyertown later brace field hockey team. As much as I was a student athlete, I'm also very committed to my studies. I take AP level classes, and I am a member of competitive academic-based clubs and participate in academic advancement activities outside of our high school. When I found out that I had AP Physics 1 in the last period of the day, I was forced to make the impossible decision to give up field hockey, something that I love. Our field hockey games are always away, always at someone else's home field. Ordinarily, I wouldn't really care about that. I enjoy the bus rides to and from games with the team. Listening to our hip-hop music on blast and the anticipated and focused atmosphere created some of my favorite memories from field hockey. But as I, as much as I treasure these moments, our exclusively away game schedule makes us leave school early about two times a week the entire season. This means we are forced to miss our ninth period and maybe even sometimes part of eighth period to play a game. The turf issue isn't just about what's fair. It's not just about who has and who doesn't. For me and many others, this is about making us leave our classes early and jeopardizing our grades in schoolwork. And as if missing classes wasn't enough, the games are usually at least a half an hour away, possibly even closer to an hour. This time spent on a bus could be spent doing homework and missed classwork from sports. Student athletes leave school early, missing classes, then go to both games for both JV and varsity, then have to go home and do their homework, and by the time that's all done, it's usually after 11 o'clock. Many of our athletes want to go on to play collegiate-level sports, but in order to play in college, a student must have good grades. How are they supposed to have good grades if they're forced to miss a, forced to miss a class to play a game? And for students such as myself who do not plan to play in college, we are forced to miss a class to do something that we love. Sports are used by so many students as a stress-relieving activity. For me, playing field hockey boosts my mood and my focus. Time that would be normally spent stressing about tests is spent in a supportive, active environment. Sports get many students' minds off of things that could be worrying them, therefore boosting mental health in general. Studies show that staying active and being social produce stress and anxiety, as well as boosting focus. Sports are extremely important to our student population, and it is a shame to see that something that is supposed to be stress-relieving ends up causing more stress due to the one factor of not having turf. I hope in the upcoming seasons, you start to realize the importance of investing in a turf field, not only for the integrity of our sports programs, but for the mental health and the academic performance of the players. Thank you.
Krista Collins.
Got here just in time. Krista Collins, Washington Township. I think it's really awesome that there's all these athletes here tonight talking about how much they want to have turf fields and stuff. I just wanted to come at this from a completely different angle. I was recently talking to a parent about the turf fields, and whether you get them or not, I don't have a child that plays sports, so I'm not coming at it from that angle. But I definitely think it is something that this board should look into, at least for future budgeting purposes. I know there's been a lot of budget issues and trying to come up with how to cover costs and things like that, and there not being a lot of fluff in the budget. But I definitely think it's something that is very important for the community and for athletes and athletics as a whole. I know that they've always been important in Boyertown. But I also wanted to come at it from a different angle of like project management side of things because that's a bit more my experience. I think it would be great if this board could maybe bring to the floor tonight a motion to maybe get a volunteer committee together to look into cost, budgeting, maintenance, and things like that. I used to help schools do a lot of their projects, and one of the things that is important is to write your project scope appropriately. Turf fields are not all created equal. That is very important to consider. There are potential class action lawsuits that could be coming down the road because of sports turf and the chemicals that are in it. There are some things called PFAS and things like that. So you definitely want to write your project scope in a way that you don't get like the cheapest manufactured turf because it seems appealing from a cost standpoint. The physical health aspects of it, of contact with, you know, bad materials, mercury, things like that, are definitely something important to consider. And if you write your project scope in a way that you want a certain field that you know has been vetted so that it's safe for the students, then you can just buy it on contract. You don't have to put it out to bid. You don't have to worry about coming in and saying, "I can save you $200,000, but it's not a comparable product." So that's really important, and I definitely think that there's a lot of expertise in the community between coaches, parents, athletes, people that work for manufacturers that would be happy to sit down and come up with a budget for free. Like, you don't have to do the work. You can delegate it out. But I think it would take the board bringing a motion to get that in, get that in play. I'm assuming is how that would work, and working with your maintenance department or your building and grounds to write that project scope. So that's all I had to say. Thank you very much.
Looking for the approval of the August 8th, 2023 committee of the whole meeting minutes?
Hogan moves.
That's Mrs. Hogan and Mr. Uptergrove?
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Mr. Uptergrove.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Ms. Duroff.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Penarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Next, we have the Pennsylvania School Board's Association Delegate Assembly. So the Pennsylvania School Board Association Delegate Assembly is an association-wide business meeting, including platform and bylaws consideration, financial update, and leadership election results. Delegate Assembly will occur Saturday, November 5th, 2023, in conjunction with the Pennsylvania Association of School Administrators, Pennsylvania School Boards Association School Leadership Conference. The governing body of the Boyertown Area School District may appoint up to three voting delegates to participate in the PSBA Delegate Assembly. Responsibilities would be for the voting delegates officially represent the entire entity in the following ways: receive reports from the PSBA President, Chief Executive Officer, and Treasurer; receive the election results for PSBA leadership, including governing board officers, zone representatives, and sectional advisors; consider proposals recommended by the PSBA Platform Committee and adopt the legislative platform for the upcoming year; consider and act upon and propose any proposed changes to the PSBA bylaws. The eligibility of the delegates is that you need to come for our purposes, be a second-class school district, and that we may appoint up to three delegates. No representative may be appointed by or represent one or more entity, which means that you wouldn't be able to represent both Boyertown and/or the board of an intermediate unit by going to this platform. The governing body of your school entity is invited to appoint voting delegates who will represent your entire entity, sorry, and vote on your behalf. We will offer access for in-person attendance at the PSBA offices to the first 120 delegates, but that's information for anybody that is interested. So there's an opportunity to be there in person as well as to appear in Zoom. So what we're looking for, and there is a motion that I believe that we can bring forward to appoint a delegate or delegates to the Pennsylvania School Boards Association Delegate. So we're looking for a motion to appoint the Pennsylvania School Boards Association Delegate Assembly is, I already read that, sorry. Let me find my motion. The Board of School Directors to approve the appointment of the district primary voting delegates at the pass of PSBA Delegate Assembly. So we would need to have three, up to three. So anyone that wants to be nominated. We can, or we can bring it forward right now if it doesn't make a difference. Do you want to wait and have discussion about this? Before we do? All right. So the next discussion item is turf field, and you know, at this point, we are looking for feedback, the administration, from the board for discussion with respects to community presentations, you know, via folks coming up to the podium and then sharing on three different occasions, including this evening. I know that Mr. Zawada had spoken at the first meeting where turf came up as a discussion and said something to the effects of, you know, directing the administration. And at this point, we really need to have some clear direction, and that's why we have turf as a discussion item. So I'm going to hand it over to you at that, at this point.
So let's have an open discussion on who would like to move forward with us at least getting prices, leveraging companies in our district who would be willing to help, and with Mr. Spacek said about getting people to, or getting grants. Who's ahead, please?
Thank you. Yeah, so I think, one, we should definitely be looking into grant funding and seeing what is available. And as, I'm sorry, I think his name, Mr. Spacek, said, people pay to rent these fields. So is there a possibility for income? And then, of course, what the overall cost would be, I guess, the upfront costs?
Yeah.
I think it's, I think it's worthy of discussion. And a little bit of, like I said, looking into to see if this is something that is possible for us. Yeah, we're next.
Yeah, well. I don't think we can make a decision unless we see what it's going to cost, what, you know, what is, what, what it's going to cost to maintain it? Do we need someone special that takes care of it? How we're going to use it? I mean, just the whole thing. And I think that Mrs. Collins made a good point to have some type of committee that kind of collaborates together so that it's not all on administration and to vet the right field, because she is right about that. There are different products out there. So I do agree with going forward and getting the pricing.
I would, right now, say that I would contact our Montgomery County reps, Senator Penny Chuck and Representative Sher Donna, and see what is out there. At least they can steer us in the direction for grants or give us names that we can find out who to talk to, but I'd be willing to take care of Montgomery County.
On my 10 years almost on the board, we've gone through this discussion before. We've gone through the discussion of renting it, and it was said we cannot. Because of all the different people that we would have that would want to use a turf field, there's no way we can rent it out because there's no time left over. If you remember that, Mr. Saltanic, there was just no time left over. So renting it out is not an option. So is that as income? It's not going to happen. If you go back, I think if you go back, it was probably seven years ago, six, seven years ago that we discussed this, and we threw that out right away. Can't rent it. The cost is phenomenal, and with our budget right now, as much as I want to give you, you people, you students, that field, we've got to get it in on the capital projects. Because it's just not something we can do just like that overnight. Not going to happen. We have buildings that need to be addressed. In my research of them, every eight to 10 years, they have to be replaced. So that's why we need to get it onto the capital projects, because we have to make sure we can replace it. The maintenance to the school, we're going to have to hire somebody who's qualified to maintain that field. So that's an additional position for us. These are all things we've got to take into consideration. So we need to put it out into the capital projects and see when we can do it. I'm not against it, but then we also have to look at the health part of it because I'm hearing there are some turf fields that cause health issues. I don't want to have any of you guys hurt. You students are important to me. Otherwise, I wouldn't be here. I don't want to see any of yous get sick or get hurt over it. So those are all things that are going through my mind. Do I want it for yous? Yeah. But we also, like I said, the renting part's out of the question already. We know that. So I think it's something that we have to do some research into. We have to look at it, and we have to see when we can put it into our capital projects. That's my opinion. I'm not against it, but we got to get it into the capital projects before we do anything. Because we do have our buildings to maintain for every student. So, thank you.
Anyone else want to add anything?
I just would say that this is just part of the evolution of our district. It's certainly something that we need to consider and, you know, I don't, I wasn't here then, but I'm sure we had these same conversations when we wanted to add elementary schools or we wanted to add a gymnasium or we wanted to add. It's the evolution of our district. Our community's growing. There's a need. But it isn't something that's going to happen overnight. I agree with you, Chris. And I know that you are speaking from experience from seven years ago. I wasn't on the board seven years ago, and unfortunately, I'm not going to be on the board four months from now. But I'm still going to be a very active parent in this district and be something that I will be interested in supporting. We need to develop a well-thought-out plan and not just a business plan, if you will. So at least we're not just saying this can't be done. Prove it, you know? We need to, I agree, the administration, this is, this is kind of asking a lot of them. I think they should be included, but I do agree that this is something that the community and maybe a few board members, to create a committee to do some of the legwork. And then, and then we can refine the plan as we go when it gets closer to actually getting precise numbers. You know, kind of right now, I still see it conceptually, and then narrow it, narrow it, narrow it in as we go. So I would be, you know, I'd be in support of pursuing this.
Should we hold up to a vote?
Okay, I'm going to take this back to process. Process for doing this first is that the administration brings it forward to the board and says, "We, the administration, support putting in a turf field. These are the reasons why, and this is, this is how it benefits the district." That's the first step. Second step along that is they go in and say, "This is where it fits in the five- or 10-year capital plan. This is where we're going to aim for, and also this, and we're going to tell you we need to start planning at this particular point in time to support that installation process." They also have to come forward and says, "Here's where, how, and where we expect to fund this from." Those are all fundamental questions that have to be asked. We're getting way ahead here. We're starting to plan what we can, can't do, and how we're going to construct it. We haven't even gotten the basics down yet. So you don't do a couple-million-dollar plan, especially when it's going to involve environmental impacts, with environmental impact studies, and do it overnight. It has to be planned, thought out. As far as a project management, you would bring in a project management company to do this. It's too big for volunteers. You're a couple million bucks. And you also have regulations that you have to follow. You have other things you have to follow. It's, it's, it's a little bit bigger than you think to just go put in. It's not just, I'm just, I'm going to go down and put down a field. Second thing about that is once you go there, you can't go back. Once you put in a turf field, the cost and the impact to pull the turf field out and put dirt back in is enormous and doesn't even guarantee it's going to work. Also, the materials give off zinc, magnesium, and other things that are possible environmental runoff issues. So all that's got to be thought out and talked about before we go anywhere with this. And like I said, at the five-year plan, this, this, this is Dan Cola. Question for you. We're still paying off two $30 million bonds that are in there that we're paying that off. We're also, we're also paying off a $7 million stadium that we're still paying off. How much did we spend on roofs this year? One and a half million? Is that pretty close? Are all our roofs done? So where the question comes in is where would, where would this fit or what are we not going to do? So there are a lot of questions. Whether turf field support or not supported turf field is irrelevant to me. Is, is it possible and when is it possible are the questions that have to be answered first before you move on with it. So a lot of stuff to think about before you move forward.
I think through our, and I'm going to look at Scott, sorry. I'm going to put you on the spot. I think under some of the fields, we have water lines too that we're going to have to watch out for. So that's also something, because I remember we ran water lines in to water the fields. So we're going to have to watch that issue also.
Done, Mr. Joe.
I just want everybody to recall back in 2006. Everybody wanted a turf track. And the community went ahead and set up a foundation, and I believe they raised over half the money before they got, before we were to get very serious about it. They did something. It took them a long time, but we finally got the track in. So these are things that people should be considering too in the community. Not expect the little old lady that lives down the street to do without her medication because her taxes are going way high. I mean, we all have to come together and try to work if it's something they want. It's not funny. It's not funny. We all have to come together and try to work it out, and by doing that, I think an effort has to be shown that, okay, maybe somebody wants to start an organization and start now doing fundraising. It doesn't mean that you have to have a commitment from the school that we're going to do it in order for them to do fundraising, because it's not going to happen overnight. Even if you do fundraising, it's going to take a long time. Takes a long time to raise a million dollars, and that's just the start. And then how many fields you want? Nobody said anything. They're saying a field, a field. But I have a feeling it's going to be more than one field. You're not going to put in one field. I mean, let's, let's get it all out on the table. So I just remind everybody what happened in 2006, and that was- And that was a godsend for the district. Same way with the stadium. That was built, Bear Stadium. That was done all with the community. Didn't cost the district a dime. So these are things that the community should think about before they come to us. With all these, uh, things they would like to have. I would like to have a lot of things too, I would like people to come and say, why aren't we a Blue Ribbon School? But I don't hear anybody coming and talking about education. Only sports. And music, that's it. It would be lovely to hear somebody saying, I want more AP classes. That, that would be wonderful. That's why I'm here. I realize you have to have a well rounded person, but I think we offer enough in sports and music. To make you well rounded. I think we ought to get our education scores up a little higher. Thank you.
So I don't, uh, maybe there was a miscommunication, I'm not looking for the board to vote on whether or not we're getting turf fields, but the vote to give direction to. The administration to seek. The pricing of the turf fields. To look into possible grants for turf fields. If the community wants to raise money to also get that done. And to s-. An opportunity to move forward. So that, that's what vote I'm gonna be looking for. Unless anyone has anything further to discuss, let's move forward.
I, I just want to comment briefly, if you're going to be moving forward on. The project, are you asking the administration to do a feasibility study? On. This issue, because that might require some. Expert help. In terms of getting the pricing. That we won't be able to be able to. Address, because I don't, um, this is not a knock on the district. Administration. But, uh, this is not a run of the mill project, and. By directing the administration to do this, are you directing the administration to have funding? To. Engage in a feasibility study. To study the options involved. I don't know, I'm raising that. Well, I, I'm seeing your facilities director shaking his head that this, you know, may be, because, uh, the issues that. Mr. Brophy had raised, uh, are. Complicated issues that need to be addressed. And it isn't just. The fact that you have grant funding and the like. Uh, the question is. Are, are specific properties available for this and. Roughly to get a, a decent number of what it's going to cost, it may take a little bit more than a surface analysis of the situation.
Wasn't a lot of this already done? When we built the stadium? Didn't we already entertain this, Mr. Palladino?
Some of, some of the engineering was done back in, I believe it was two thousand seventeen, eighteen. When we were looking at three different options of putting turf in Memorial Stadium or two fields out back. A lot of that had to do with, and I'm probably gonna use the wrong term, because I'm not an engineer. With, with like the stormwater management. With, um, the ND, MDNF permits.
NP, NPDES.
Yeah, NPDES permits, where we couldn't go over certain, certain amount of acreage with disturbed soil. So a lot of that plan had to encompass the entire plan of what we did. So. I don't know if we could use those engineering studies to simply just. Move over. I, I, that, that would be more of a question for, you know.
I have a quick question, which field are we talking about putting the turf on?
We, we did three different proposals before.
Which field, I, I thought we were talking about a, like Memorial Field, or, or a, a field for field hockey, or something like that, are, are we talking about the stadium? We doing the stadium?
There was.
That's the field, that's, that's what we're talking about moving forward on?
I, I don't, I wasn't given direction to do anything yet.
I, I would think in reality.
Yeah.
In reality, you would need two fields.
So we're not just talking one field, we're talking two.
Just, just, just my opinion. I don't know what the community's opinion is, and I don't know what the board's opinion is, I'm just telling you my opinion. You would need two fields.
Which two?
Well, one would be the stadium, obviously.
Which other one?
But again, there's, there's a lot of ways that this is either feasible or not, and not, not all of its money, it could be financially that we can't raise this money. It could be feasible because. Of the drainage or other things. I'm saying, let's exhaust those options first, let's see what that is. Cause I wasn't on the board when they voted on that. I would've voted to add the turf fields.
I think.
I think at this point, it's above all our heads, and what Mr. Brophy said. I think we need, maybe ask the, the administration to reach out to a project. Company or management team. That is an expert at this, I'm sure we probably, what, Pots Grove and Pottstown just got new fields put in? Okay, it's not, but they have somebody.
Looking for funds.
Okay. So, but I mean, there's companies that have been used in our. Athletic thing that maybe we can get a reference from, and then ask the administration. Ask the administration to, to, uh. Look into that.
But now you're asking for, we're talking.
Say, we can come back at the next meeting with what is feasibility proposal today. And maybe go from there.
That was a conference from the administration, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, um, so I just have one question, in two thousand seventeen or eighteen, um, when that discussion was happening, what was the reason we decided not to move forward?
There were, there were three options given during the, the stadium project. And the board voted to, they were, um, optional things to add in. And they voted not to move forward with the turf, but to move forward with everything else.
Okay, thank you.
I think it was totally due to the cost of it, because the stadium itself cost us more than we were supposed to be spending, if I am correct.
It was money.
It was, it was a big deal with the, the cost of it. And then we did wind up putting those water lines underneath. So now we have to watch what fields we're gonna do to there, because we're gonna disturb the water lines. So there's a lot more that's gonna go into this. And. Financially, I don't even know if we have the money in the budget, if it's gonna cost us, whatever. Can it come out of your budget for your?
Yeah, he's got a six million dollar budget.
I guess I, we need a little bit more clarity on what the water lines are, Mr. Shiel, do you know, or Mr. Palladino, are, are they the water lines, or are they the drainage lines for the field?
They ran water lines, it, it was. If, if I'm correct, it was done before the stadium project. From behind Bear Stadium, where the scoreboard is from the well. Out to what we call field number one and field two, which is where the soccer team plays, boys across. And, uh, practice football field. They ran temporary water line, not temporary, they ran water lines down there so they could water the fields. So they're just, they, they run under, behind the, the outfield fence, down an access road. They don't run under the field, they just run to the edge of it.
And that was done by the community too, is it geared to, to the school district?
This one was just, was done by us, I believe. It's not the, the well is behind Bear Stadium, it's a different well. We tied into. The sprint, the system that's in Bear Stadium. They, the Legion, or I'd say the community did the well back in the eighties.
Yeah, Patty. We borrowed money for the stadium, the new building and the stadium. We got two thirty million dollar bonds, right? Didn't we borrow more money from a bank to finish the projects?
I'd have to look at that.
Yeah, I think we did. That's how upside down we were.
We, we, we borrowed, we had thirty million, we, we had sixty million in bonds, we borrowed another seven million dollars for the stadium, it's a separate loan.
Seven million.
That's, that's the number I think it was.
So at this time, the direction to the administration is to come back at the next meeting on the September eighth meeting to. Provide, um, at least what the cost would be to conduct a feasibility still, study for turf fields. And I'm saying fields.
I agree.
Okay.
Yeah, I would also like, if you're gonna do that, if you want me to. Give money for a feasibility study, I'd like to know where it's gonna fit into the capital, capital plan. And how we could possibly be financing it. Cause I don't want you to spend money on a feasibility study, and then we go and say, we don't have any money for it.
Right, so right now, all we're doing is saying, well, all we're going to do is find out what a feasibility study would cost.
Yeah, and so, before we spend any money.
Right.
We, we need all those.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't want to throw away fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars engineering costs. Just to, to, to see that we can't do it.
September twelfth meeting, I apologize, so it'll be the September twelfth meeting. All right. Does that finish the discussion on turf fields at this time?
Next up, we have, um, the Board of School Directors to approve the confidential settlement and release agreement for student. Number one, zero, one, seven, eleven, and two, three, zero, seven, six, one.
Hogan second. Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Ms. Duroff.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Penarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under the superintendent's report and the itemized agenda, we are looking for the, um. School board, or the administration is recommending the Board of School Directors approve the new four-year collective bargaining agreement with the Boerstown Area Education Association. The school district has negotiated over the past eight months with the Boerstown Area Education Association to establish a reasonable and a sustainable employment agreement. This agreement is projected to be reasonable and sustainable with appropriate budgetary resources.
Hogan moves.
I thought we were still looking for. For the co-curriculum. Numbers. Aren't we, or not, or we're just accepting what? Okay.
Approving the agreement as presented.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
I, I'm required to abstain. Due to personal conflicts.
Ms. Nyman.
No.
Ms. Duroff.
No.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Penarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we are going to be looking for the Boer, Boerstown Area School District to appoint, um, Mrs. Lisa Hogan. Um, and Mrs. Mary Ann Scott, and Mrs. Christine Nyman. As the district's primary voting delegates at the PASA PSBA twenty twenty-three School Leadership Conference. And again, administration recommends the appointment of, uh, Mrs. Lisa Hogan, um, Mrs. Mary Ann Scott, and Mrs. Christine Nyman.
Mr. Hemingway.
No.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
No.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Ms. Duroff.
No.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Penarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
We are looking for the Board of School Directors to accept a five thousand dollar donation from the Boerstown Stadium Committee. The monetary donation will go towards the purchase of track hurdles for the Boerstown Area Senior High School.
Duroff second.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Ms. Duroff.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Penarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And last, we are looking for the Board of School Directors to approve the personnel agenda items as presented.
Duroff moves. Nyman seconds.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Ms. Duroff.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Penarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
That completes my report.
There's no one signed up for public comment period number two, so we're gonna go to board comment.
Tonight, I'd like to thank Mr. Robert Reinhardt and the Boerstown Area Sports Complex for their donation of the five thousand dollars. Uh, for football, uh. And I just, I said earlier, back in two thousand and six. The Boerstown Area Community Wellness Council also raised, I believe, over half the money to build the turf track. You can see, some of the same community members are still helping the district. By donating money for various items we are in need of and cannot keep on being a burden to our taxpayers. That's why we call Boerstown a special kind of place. Thank you again, Mr. Reinhardt. That's it.
First, I want, I know William left, but I want to congratulate him, it's a great accomplishment. Uh, Mr. Shields, thank you for the flag at New Hanover, I appreciate you following that up, but it was nice to see that up there.
Well, I don't, no comment tonight.
Um, yeah, so I wanted to, again, congratulate, um. William on his graduation. Um, and thank the. Um, Stadium Committee for their donation. I was not present at our last committee meeting, so I just wanted to really quick go over a few, um. Areas of advocacy, um, is legis, from the BCIU legislative update. Um, so on the federal front, um, there are some proposed section five oh four. Uh, rules that are expected in August, I will send all this out to the entire board, but that is something I would look over, it's, it's a, it's a. Pretty lengthy document, so I just wanted to highlight a few things, um. There's the IDEA full funding act that's, um, out there, that's another thing just to look into and kind of. See what you think about that. The House FY twenty-four appropriations proposal, which would gut education, I would look into that as well. And then from the state news. Let's see, oh, the commission to study the basic education funding formula. So there's some information on that, and there'll be a follow-up document as well, I would just give that a look over. And it looks like in Pennsylvania, what, they're really, um, trying to move some things to encourage, um. Teachers, people to go into the profession, as well as, um. Getting certificates a little quicker, um, things like that, that would help with the teacher shortages. So those are all things just to kind of look into. Uh, like I said, I'll send the document out, and I'll try, I'll send, I have a highlighted version, so I'll send that to you guys too, everything's important. The highlighted ones are just the ones I felt. Were of most importance, there's a bunch of charter school legislation, um. Proposals, uh, that, that are on here as well, so those are things just to kind of look over, so that's all for me, thank you.
I was wondering when we're gonna get the next Act ninety-three update? I haven't heard anything yet, and it's two weeks later?
Uh, no comment, except just, uh, welcome everybody back, it's have a great year. Bring it on, go Bears, right?
Okay, um, welcome to the, uh, gentleman tonight for going through and finishing his graduation, and. Importantly, that he's going off, I believe you said, to Marine. Which is not an easy task, so that's gonna be, um, hope he does well. Uh, welcome back to all of our students, hopefully everybody's having a good year so far, I know it's only the second day, you're going to the third tomorrow. And let's have a good year.
Um, I have a meeting at the BCTC tomorrow night, and I will have a. I have a meeting at the BCTC tomorrow night, and I will have information on the following meeting from, from that meeting. Thank you.
Just want to welcome back all our students and teachers and staff, and look forward to a great year.
Okay, our upcoming meetings will be September 12th. This is the committee of the whole, and it will be at New Hanover Upper Frederick Elementary School at 7:00 PM. September 26th, the Board of School Directors meeting will be held here at the Ed Center at 7:00 PM. And then our two meetings in October are October 10th, which will be out in the district at Colbrookdale Elementary, and October 24th, back here at the Ed Center.